And life.
Okay, gonna call the meeting to order. And we're here for one thing and one thing only today, and that's to discuss the future of the premises and whatnot. A few notes to go over, if anybody leaves their spot where they're sitting, the mask goes on. If anybody needs to use the washroom, exit from that door to my left. And then you won't be picked up on this camera coming in and out all the time, go out that door over there. Uh, and everything other than that is pretty well the normal rules of operation. Oh yeah, and if only you have a little comment. That you don't want somebody to hear, you better not say it because these microphones are gonna pick it up. And I gotta ask Doug and Todd, what's the vision like today compared to the last meeting?
We have, we seem to have two views of council at this point, uh, one is sort of a, a big shot and one is a shot that zooms in on you, Jim. So, um, uh, that, that zoom in on you is, um, still a little, um, small of you, but it's, uh, better than before.
That's a nice compliment, thanks.
You're welcome, any, anytime, Jim, anytime, Jim.
Okay, so I'd like to welcome everyone here, we do have, uh, all our senior management team sitting across to my left. And we have people sitting over here and some other staff, anyway, and, uh, I, right now. Gotta put my glasses on because it is a little dull in here. And I'm gonna stand for just a second. So I've called the meeting to order and I would ask that anybody has a declaration of community intentions, they can make it now at any point in time through the meeting. And we're gonna start with staff reports is section three, three point one C A O. And I would also like to welcome Paul Bradshaw here, he's going to be doing the presenting. And that will commence shortly, anyway, Laurie.
Thank you, through the warden, good morning, uh, county councilors. So, uh, this is the meeting that, uh, council scheduled of, uh, coming out of the May twenty first discussion on the courthouse campus, if you recall, we were, we had a report uh, that talked about twenty four St. Andrew Street and a couple of options there. Um, and then, uh, the direction was, uh, to take a look at the courthouse campus buildings and, uh, demonstrate, um, if, uh, our space needs could actually be accommodated by twenty four St. Andrew or five Huron Street before you, um, made a decision on any of those um, longer term, uh, building, uh, renewal projects. So in order to confirm our space needs, because we've had multiple reports over the past ten years and there's, uh, various, uh, space needs numbers in there, but there hasn't been a solid methodology in terms of, uh, space accommodation that connects to the business to support the business of, uh, the municipality. So for today, we're looking at, uh, some options, uh, we will demonstrate the twenty four St. Andrew uh, accommodation piece, uh, we know that, uh, our space, uh, number has been verified in terms of what we need. It certainly is reduced from past reports. In one report I did see a few years ago, it was sixteen thousand square feet, then thirteen thousand square feet. And you'll see today we have verified it, um, to be eighty-five hundred square feet. And, uh, some of that reduction comes out of you've built other, other buildings that have accommodated other administrative staff. So I have, uh, and we've engaged Paul Bradshaw, who is from Mayhew, and he'll give himself an introduction on, uh, what Mayhew does, but, uh, they're very well known for, uh, working with, um, municipalities, doing joint builds, doing single builds and, um, addressing accommodation needs, but tying it to their business. So I thought that would be important for council to consider in this part. Um, are there more recommendations, or are there more options available than certainly what we presented? Absolutely there are, it's just we're coming out of, uh, working with the resolution that we got in terms of narrowing in, looking at the, uh, campus buildings. So I'll turn it over to Paul and then ask him to give, uh, a short overview of Mayhew and go through the information.
Thank you, um, do you wanna, whoever's controlling the presentation, just wanna bring up the first slide. Okay, um, so, yeah, good morning, everybody, um, a little bit about, I'm Mayhew and, uh, and my role and, um, a little bit of history, so, Mayhew is, uh, is a office environments company. So, um, our goal is to work with variety of different businesses and, and create workspaces that support their business. Specifically, um, I played, wear a number of hats inside the company, but, um, for this project and others, I spend a lot of time working with different municipalities, municipalities to help them understand what their space needs are and then create long-term accommodation strategies. Um, so we've done that for, uh, the region of Holton, uh, Holman County, with Holman County. We recently completed the accommodation strategy for the city of London, uh, which was a large complex, complex strategy, they're, they're currently implementing that. We are potentially looking at revisiting it due to the impacts of COVID. So we have lots of experience working, uh, both in the, in the public and private sector, so definitely understand the uniqueness um, of working inside, inside the public sector. And the intent of this study, um, is not really around where Susie's gonna sit at the end of the day or what a workstation is gonna look like, it's really about understanding your business. And I think most people in the room would agree that, uh, a lot of organizations out there believe they're successful if they have their people aligned with their process and their technology. And if those three things are all working together really, really well, then they're successful. We come along and say, yes, but all those things happen inside space. So the initiative that we've undertaken today, or up, up until today, was to spend time with the senior management team to really understand those three things, right, to understand people. When we talk about understanding people, we're looking at things like headcounts, but we're looking at generations in the workforce, we're looking at what people do, looking at how people interact. Uh, we're trying to understand process, so the process would be more around, uh, the journey of your customer. How do you interact, um, with the community, how does the community need to access you? Uh, when you look internally, um, everybody has a customer. Um, so, you know, I always pick on I T, but I T has a customer, it may not be the constituent directly, but it would be folks within the organization. So we're understanding all those processes. And then we have a little bit of a, of a discussion around technology and, and the impact that technology would have on how people work, and that could be, you know, computers, it could be something as simple as micromakers. It's a whole bunch of different things that would fall into the technology piece. We take, take, take that information and, and then put it back through our lens, which is space. So then the intent is that we have some metrics, um, related to your organization based on those three criteria that we can then map out and compare to not only other public sector organizations, but also the private sector as well. So, um, if you wanna go just to the first slide, so, um, there we go, um, so, so the reason that we're here was obviously the, the resolution that was put forward on, on May twenty first. And, um, when we look at the options, the, the resolution really talked about looking at what we can do with respect to the campus buildings. As part of accommodation strategy, uh, you always wanna have stakes in the ground, you know, we wanna have barriers. And so you will see a, a variety of different options, but you will see the option of doing nothing. Because that would be one side of, of an accommodation strategy, to doing everything. And, and everything realistically for us is to build new. So you will see those two options, and then we looked at the utilization, uh, of twenty four St. Andrew Street. And then we also looked at five Sheeran as well. And again, when we look at these things, we're looking around space utilization, right, and how they can accommodate staff. So if you, um, keep going for me, that's perfect, nope, back one, sorry. Um, so what we looked at, at doing and, and what I intend on, um, presenting back to you today is an understanding of, uh, issues that exist today with respect to, um, service delivery, facility utilization, staff, uh, adjacencies, those types of things, uh, which we will present to you, along with, um, what is a current headcount and what is a future headcount. So it's great that you can come back and say, hey, you know what, this building's gonna work, and it works today. Um, but you know what, it doesn't really support staff interaction, and if you hire one more person, we got no room for that person. So, you know, it's creating some insight for what the future would look like, which then allows us to create that short and long-term, uh, accommodation strategy. Again, that, you know, looking at the feasibility of, of utilizing facilities that are currently on that campus site. And then at, at the end of the day, also bring back a plan that would allow the organization to make right decisions moving forward. Irrelevant of what direction is given. As changes need to occur inside space, space is your second biggest cost across organizations, next to your people. So as you make those changes, irrelevant of, of, of what the end state looks like, anything that you do today moving forward should tie into that bigger plan, so that the investments that you made are, that makes sense, they can be reutilized. So if you're gonna move people around, let's not move them five times to get to the end state because we didn't have a vision, let's move them once. Hopefully we know what that vision is gonna be over time. You cannot, it would be good, but you cannot flip the switch and say, yes, let's do this and have it all arrive, all finished on, on Monday morning. Just don't happen that quickly. So it's about creating an evolution and creating a, a roadmap to, to get to wherever that recommendation leads us. So, next slide. As far as the process that we went through, and I don't know, we'll see how small the text is when it comes up. Um, but we brought the senior management team together, um, in a workshop. So we spent just, uh, probably about three hours together, um, to create alignment around critical business topics. And if you click the first button for me, um, we spent, oh, good, we can read this. We spent, um, a lot of time understanding the things that are up there, I won't read them all, but we're understanding very strategic things like vision and mission and culture, right, things that, that senior leaders, those are the things that keep them up the, like, up at night. So if you have a good culture, you know, we have good interaction between our staff, our staff trusts each other and they can innovate, then we know we're gonna have good business results, and that holds true whether it's a public sector or a private sector organization, it, it really doesn't matter. We then got more and more tactical, um, with the things that we discussed and aligned. We didn't get down to the, how does things, things really get done around here conversation, because we're dealing with leaders. If you were to move forward and make physical space change, we then get into that conversation of, about individuals' job function needs. We're, we're one step out from that, right? So we're, we're, we're vision, we're mission, we're, we're workflow, how does information move through the organization? How do we interact with people? What works today and what really could be improved on and, and how space could impact that? Those are the conversations that we had, and we created alignment around that, and I use that word purposely. We don't always create agreement, but we create alignment, we create alignment to a strategic direction. Do you wanna go to the next slide? We then continue to work to, to move forward. And we start to, to look at things around, um, you know, facility needs, what are the spaces do we, do we need? I could be, uh, very stereotypical around the needs of a public organization, uh, you know, a municipality. Um, we don't do that. You know, you're a county, could I compare you to, um, Holman County? It's a county, right, lots of different communities tie into that one county. I won't do that, uh, because of the uniqueness of, of the constituents, the uniqueness of the community. We need to be able to pull those things through as part of that conversation. Um, we also work through adjacencies. And adjacencies are a really, really important in an accommodation strategy. And then with our process for that, was each leader actually worked on their own as part of this session and created their adjacencies, and, and I will present a couple of adjacencies, and I have them all, I don't think we need to go through all of them, we can if you'd like. Um, but I'll, I'll go through a couple. But those adjacencies, they create individually, and what an adjacency is, is who do I need to work with? Who's my department, the group that I support, who do they need to work with, um, to be successful, right? So it's a primary adjacency, and I mean, kinda joke when we go through it, is you can't pick your friends, right? Because we all like to sit next to our friends, but it's who do I physically need to sit next to to improve my job? They then presented those back to the entire team. And some of those relationships aren't always reciprocated, and, and that's okay, and you'll see when we go through those adjacencies as to why it's okay. But again, it, it was an opportunity to create alignment to the overall direction of the organization at, at a very senior level. You wanna click the next one? Um, we then worked through, um, space allocation guidelines, um, your, your existing documentation. So there's lots of good work that's been done. Um, and it, you know, it doesn't always agree with what this direction is, and some of those reports didn't always agree with each other, and that's okay. But that's good information there, so we spent a lot of time looking at that. Uh, again, this study is about space utilization. So although those facility audits are, that have been completed are very, very important, they're not the foundation of, of this. We comment them on them, they, they've, uh, they've been included in the recommendations that we put forward. Um, but this is really about a space, space utilization of what makes sense to support the needs of the business. Um, so what I end up with at, at this point, um, is a, almost like a three-dimensional bubble diagram that is your organization, right? And it's all based on interaction, it's all based on business need. Then I can start to tie in headcounts, right? So now I can tie in space needs, how much space do they need, what types of spaces do I need? And it creates some substance and some size to that bubble diagram. Well, now I have this thing that's floating around, and this is the way that we look at it, it's kinda floating around. Well, now I have facility options, and I can take that diagram and I can literally drop it on a facility, and I can see what fits and what doesn't fit. And I can move that around a building, and I can see what adjacencies aren't going to be supported. So in a, in a facility, for example, that has more than one floor, I can say, well, geez, it won't offset. But if I take this part and I, the rest of it doesn't fit, I'll put that on another floor, what's the impact to those interactions and those adjacencies? And I can do the positives and negatives, or the strengths and weaknesses of that. Okay, well, what, what happens if I move it this way? Now I don't support these adjacencies over here, well, then I can do the strengths and weaknesses. So now what we have is we have some different options as we move through this to say, i- if we do it this way, these are the challenges that we're gonna have. And if we do it this way, here's the strengths that we're gonna have. So it becomes less a conversation of, I'd like to sit beside this person, because we've always done it that way, and more of a conversation of, hey, do you know what, in order to support the way that we wanna run our business, this is a better way to lay out our space. So that's kinda the information that, that we pull through. If you just, uh, just click once. And then as you move forward, uh, to the, to the bubbles or the boxes that are on, on the right side, uh, you get into your overall space needs, uh, and then ultimately, at some point, an accommodation plan. We're not there, we've got some recommendations, we have a little way to go before you get to a true accommodation plan. Um, but that's ultimately where, where you're trying to get. If you just wanna click through. So as far as, um, some of the things that we looked at and some, and some basic findings, um, a lot of it is visual, a lot of the, the documentation that exists today is visual. You know, the existing facility locations, and I know you all know that, but, but I will, I will go back to that just, just to cover everything off. Uh, we'll talk about staff accommodation, a little bit on, on the service delivery model. At this point in, in where we are, it is, it is quite simplistic, but I think it will show you um, how we look at space utilization and why that service delivery model is, is so important. Um, and then we'll go through the space needs and, uh, and the future needs to support growth. So, next slide, please. So, um, I think everybody knows where we are on this campus. So, um, we, we have the two existing, uh, facilities where we're, we're supporting current administration. And we're focused on administration that is supported in those two facilities. I know that we have, John, for example, is in a, in a different, in different facility, we'll talk about that. We're not necessarily looking to accommodate those, those folks back into a main administrative facility. Um, so in the courthouse, and then the leased space that's off to the right. And then the unused, the one that's marked as the unused facility is the, is the, uh, Andrew Street, uh, St. Andrew Street, uh, facility. And then we're just identifying five Sheeran Street as well, ju- just for completeness. If you want the next slide. We'll go quickly through here. Um, I thought it was important to, kind of just to identify you that spaces that we're utilizing today to support administration inside the courthouse. And when we start to look at adjacencies and we kinda remember how, you know, to some extent chunked up the spaces, you'll see how we're not necessarily you're doing a real good job or how we can do a better job in supporting those adjacencies. So, uh, so that's the first level. Uh, the boardroom is in the bottom, uh, bottom left, so I think all of you, in fact, just to orientate you, uh, to do a, and planning. And there's been some evolution to this over the little while, over the last little while, but, uh, this is the current, what, kinda what we have electronically. Just skip to the next one. Uh, so then, uh, on the second floor, and again, recent changes, so I know that it says C A O's office. We've, she's relocated up, I think, up to the, up to the third floor, go to the third floor. Um, I didn't put it on the plan, but it's up there, and it's a shared space for the C A O as well. So just to give you a quick sense of, of the courthouse, so you can see where administration is, and talk about some challenges in a second, but a perfectly example is a C A O in a shared space on a different floor from the rest of the administration. And then just look again. And then the other, the other facilities, again, just, uh, so we have, just for completeness, you can see that the four buildings that we were looking at inside my stakes in the ground for, for accommodation strategies. Next. So, some comments on, on, um, some challenges and some things that we've, we've identified again, around space utilization and supporting the needs of your business. Um, so many areas, um, in the courthouse building are not accessible. That's no surprise, there's some accessibility challenges, and, uh, code is obviously recently been updated, it's, it's continuing to evolve. Uh, but from an accessibility perspective, that building doesn't meet current standards. Doesn't mean you have to change anything today because the code says so, but if you were to make changes within that building, um, you would have to bring that building up to code. Um, public works and, uh, and the paramedic leadership are not accommodated in the current administrative facility. And as I said before, we're not looking to bring them back to a, to a central administrative facility, but they should have space and space should be available in there for them to work. Um, so if, um, uh, paramedic leader has to come to, to the building for a meeting, and maybe there's a meeting at ten o'clock in the morning, and then there's another meeting at three o'clock in the afternoon, it's really inefficient to come and leave and come back. Imagine if we could have space there where, where, you know, that leader could work and engage with the rest of the leadership team, um, maybe have confidential phone calls, but be set up to work in more of a touchdown hoteling type space. You can't accommodate that today in, in the current administration. Already talked about the, the office sharing, so the, the C A O, um, from an office sharing perspective, along with legislative services are, are sharing space as well. Um, current spaces integrated, uh, with provincial courts and P O A, um, really doesn't, so, you know, they're, they're counter, the functions that aren't real good put together. We do see P O A in, in some small municipalities utilizing the corporate administrative space for, for P O A functions. Generally, it's not a high-risk type court, I mean, most of us have maybe taught it had a speeding ticket from time to time, had to go into, to P O A. Um, but provincial court is, is a little bit different, right? So, um, you know, there are concerns around safety and access and people being able to, to walk around a, um, a facility. Yes, it's a public facility, but there's different levels of access that should be employed in, inside a public facility. And, and I'll talk about that when we present the service delivery model. Um, so again, not compatible with municipal functions. And we have planning and economic development accommodated in a leased facility. And that can, and, and from, from our, our conversations with senior managers, um, that can create confusion, uh, for the public. So when the public comes and they need to meet with planning, we know that, that planning, economic development needs to be publicly accessible. They'll have, you know, the public, general public, visitor public, uh, business public show up unscheduled, and, and we wanna support that, and that's important. That accessibility is important. But where do they go? Do they go to the courthouse, because that's what main administration is today, and then they've gotta go and get turned around and figure out who to speak to, and, and then they gotta go somewhere to another building. And is that, is that frustrating? Is that really a good way to support, um, uh, to support your service? So, we can pull that up. So some comments there, and then just to work through, um, the adjacency diagrams. Go to the next slide. I have one, I have an adjacency diagram for, uh, every department, uh, that is currently housed on the campus and in the leased facility. And again, these, these are important because they talk about, um, they identify a way to be efficient in the way in which we interact with staff and in, interact with, with public and, and internally. Um, so this first one is, is for legislative services. Um, so when we went through this, um, and, you know, Tyler, you know, you had this big piece of paper and he, he drew everything out. Um, I made it look a little neater than when, when you did it. Um, but it's from, it's, it's from his point of view, right? So from the, his role, leading that group, this is his vision, and this is his requirements for interaction. So he has a strong link, um, so everything that's inside the bubble, if you will, are probably the, they are the most critical interactions that we need to support, right? So let's say services obviously has a, has along with a very strong link to, to the warden and, and councilors, and hopefully you're pleased to see that. And also a strong link to the C A O, right? Also has a link to planning. Right, so when I start to lay out a building, um, that becomes secondary, but it becomes important. So if I have to put a group in the space somewhere close to legislative service, the coast to legislative services, I'm gonna put planning there if I can versus putting corporate services. So we can start to get that, gonna put them somewhere, let's put them where it makes sense to support the business. And then we've also identified, um, other, um, other, uh, important adjacencies, like we've got reception. So you have responsibility for reception, doesn't necessarily have to be excited because reception needs to be somewhere else, probably in the building. Uh, and then other sp- critical spaces that are, that are utilized, like council chambers and, and public meeting spaces, those type of things. When we go through this, if you just wanna go to the next slide for me. Um, skip past that one, unless, unless you would like me to go through every single one, I can. Uh, through the warden, do you want me to go through every one, or just?
I th- I think you know what you're doing there, you go through the ones you think are important.
Okay, yeah.
If somebody has questions, they can certainly raise their hand and we can get them answered.
Thank you. Um, so if we go to, to the planning one, you'll see that the planning did not put legislative services there. And that's okay, right? So we don't always have to have those relationships, um, reciprocated. So what you'll see there, planning has a real strong link to, to economic development, uh, which is what we would expect, that's exactly what we expect, I'm gonna see these things, and having done many, many of these for different organizations, we sometimes see some differences of, like where D I S, for example, lies within an organization will sometimes change. Where facilities lies in the organization will sometimes change, but we do see a, a real strong link always between, uh, you know, act and, and planning. And then if you just keep going, um, I'll let you skip past all of these, and we can have just some, like, in this one. And sorry, that yellow doesn't turn up real well on the slide, and it says, uh, financial services. So for H R and financial services, it's, it's an interesting one because, um, it looks like they have no adjacencies. They, they don't wanna be with anybody. Um, but the reality is, is that they're a central service, um, to the, to the organization. So it's not that they don't have public access, um, but the access is in a very different way. So for H R, for example, maybe there's interviewing that has to happen with the public. Um, that's done in a, in a planned scenario with planned access. Uh, financial services, they may have auditors come in, for example. And typically it's planned and we wanna have controlled access to that group. So it allows us to kinda put them, um, away from, from the public inside of, inside of building, inside of, inside of layout there. So, um, so with all that information in hand, we now, um, at a very strategic level can start to identify a service delivery model, right? And, you know, before you did anything with respect to, uh, making changes in spaces, deeper dives, especially with service delivery, that would need to happen. So, you know, we're identifying it at, at a high level, um, but there will be, there should be some deeper dives about how, exactly how we do it. How we exactly interacting with the public today, and how could that change moving forward? Uh, because we know it's changing, for sure. So if you just go to the next slide. Um, this is not intended to be a brand-new three-story building. Um, it's not intended to be a brand-new one-story building. Um, it's just a square box on a page that talks about the relationship, um, between the different departments and, and, and the public access. So what you'll see is at the bottom of that, of that rectangle, you'll see public access. And anything that's in that first, uh, rectangle at the bottom are things that require, um, direct public access. Um, usually where we don't need or potentially want to have people physically sign in to a building, no. I know that COVID has changed that, at least in the near term, um, because we all had to fill out our forms today coming in, and that's, that, you do that everywhere now. It used to be uncomfortable, and now it's just become the norm. So it, it is, is a different type of space than would, that would be needed in, compared to the, to the top rectangle. So in that true public access space, we obviously have council chambers, whether it's in its existing location in the accommodation strategy or, or somewhere else, but it is a public accessible space. Um, along with reception, uh, which is part of the legislative services team. That could be, um, a true just reception, it, it could be a triage, it could be a whole bunch of different things uh, when you do your deeper dives around service delivery, uh, but it is publicly accessible. And then economic, um, development and planning, tourism and planning, um, is also that, in that publicly accessible. And what we've identified there, um, is a service counter and access to meeting space. So when somebody comes in, it doesn't mean they can walk right into the space and just walk up to anybody's workstation, they will come up to a counter, um, or a, or a barrier, if you will, that will create, create the controlled access to the space, but they can get there right from the outside. And we've done a little high-level plan to kinda show you what that would look like. And then as we get deeper into the organization, in that next level, we have the C A O, warden, council, uh, legislative services and, and human resources. And what that access is, is it still requires public access, but it should be controlled. Right, it should be controlled access. So we have the C A O in, in the office. It should be controlled access. So we have the C O in the office. They probably will meet with the public, probably want to have that happen. But we want to have it in a controlled fashion. We just don't want members of the business community to be able to come walk in and knock on the C O's door and just automatically have a meeting with that individual. It needs to be more planned, it needs to be more secure. So we can start to exact some space. Same with council. Maybe it would be great to be able to meet with constituents inside the administrative facility, maybe that would make sense. But again, you may be in there for an afternoon, doing all the things that you need to get done. You don't want the public just to come and just show up. You want to meet with them, but a little bit on your terms. So that's the intent of that. And then that last level of access again is financial services, information technology. No real direct public access required, everything should be planned and we can put them a little deeper into the building. So you can start to see how we can now handle safety, employee safety, security, access into the facility at the same time as supporting your service delivery and supporting adjacencies as well. Want to flip to that? Yeah, thank you. So now we've got this, we've got this model going up and this is look like in space, how much, this is pretty, how much space do we really need? But now we start to take a look at staff count. And we have your existing staff count that's up there and some thoughts around future staff count. And if anybody has a solid methodology on identifying staff growth in the public sector, please let me know. Because it's very, very difficult to get to. It really is. We don't know what gets uploaded and downloaded from the province. There's lots and lots of challenges with that. We do have access to other municipalities' growth, so we can tie it to that. But again, there's a uniqueness in your community. Right? So if I was to take a look at the town of Milton and tie your staff growth to the town of Milton, we wouldn't even be close. Right? Because of the growth that's occurring in Milton is not the growth that's occurring out here. We can maybe take a look at Holdham County. That may be something to look at, but they may have a little bit more growth than what you will have. But we think this is a conservative number with respect to staff growth and we've been able to accommodate them and included that in what our recommended space amount would be. So to get to how much space you need, if you could go to the next slide. And over the next couple of slides, I will kind of take you through how we get to that. So I know just saw a number up there, I'm not going to explain it too much right now, but bear with me, we'll get through that. So, and this would assume a couple of things with that eighty-five hundred square feet. And it's approximately eighty-five hundred square feet and that's done on purpose. That eighty-five does not include new council chambers. So it didn't include that. I was to put new council chambers in there, you know, probably add about a thousand square feet. But the reason it's approximate is that if you're going into an existing facility, we have existing architecture, that can either make it really efficient to create space or it can decrease the efficiency. So if you have a round building, as an example, it's not as efficient as a square building. Right? So we've used standards and I'll talk about government standards in a later slide on how we come up with what that square footage is that you require, but we're comfortable with that number based on, and you'll see what that's based on shortly. So our options, and I set off the top. You know, we had our two stakes in the ground, which is to do nothing, right? Is to make no facility changes and kind of stay the course and we'll talk a little bit about that. Revitalize and expand the twenty-four St. Andrew facility. You won't all fit in that, in that building without an expansion. So I think based on the eighty-five hundred square feet. Reutilize or revitalize like Huron Street, again, to create that campus. And you will fit, we believe you will fit. We haven't done a feasibility plan on it, but based on what we think you need, based on the size of that facility, the organization would fit in there. And then obviously the other stake in the ground is to create a new green field facility. So next slide, a little bit around those options and high-level cost guidelines. Okay, they're cost guidelines, they're high-level, they're based on industry standards. They're based on assumptions for sure, there's a lot that we don't know. So when, for example, when we look at option three, you know, we're using a cost per square foot for renovation, between, you know, a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty dollars a square foot, where does that number come from? Based on the projects that we're doing now with full renovation of buildings, demolition, interior demolition and construction. That's where those numbers are coming in right now. But we haven't opened up a wall, we haven't booked inside the ceiling yet. So anybody that's renovated a house knows that as soon as you start renovation, what you thought you had, quite often things will come up. But that range, if you will, of, you know, one fifty, a hundred eighty dollars a square foot is comfortable. When we had lots of conversations saying, well, what is it different here versus it is in London versus what it is in Toronto? And I can tell you that it's not, it's really not. If you're right downtown Toronto, pre-COVID, and you're in one of the big, big towers, it's probably a little bit more expensive for sure. Just for the ability to be able to do it, you can only get in the elevators at night and you've got, you know, it's hard to get all that material up and down. But generally, there's not a lot of difference. I know the city of London, when we're doing budgets for renovation in their finance hall, and all they're doing is like literally taking everything out and painting and putting carpet in, they're not putting any walls in, at least they weren't, that strategy is likely going to change. But we're just putting open workstations in, we were budgeting a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. You know, and that's with no real construction afterwards. So that's where that range, that range comes from. So the do-nothing option, right? Option one. So, you know, from a budget perspective or cost guidelines there, you know, you're still going to have your lease, but I believe it's approximately fifty thousand dollars a year for where we have planning and economic development. And then there will still be, something needs to be done with twenty-four St. Andrew Street. And there are reports out there suggesting from two thousand and eighteen what that would cost. You know, so that, but that, something has to happen with that building, we believe. Option two is to utilize twenty-four St. Andrew and expand. And we spent a little bit more time on that option in this presentation. Somewhere between one point, two point five to three million dollars for that. That includes the changes that would need to occur at twenty-four St. Andrew. Option three, again, we talked about that already. Again, you would still need to do something with twenty-four St. Andrew. And then if you were to do a brand-new building somewhere, you're somewhere between four, four and a half million dollars. Still have to do something with twenty-four Andrew and that doesn't include any kind of land acquisition costs. Where the construction numbers come from, we're carrying somewhere between four hundred and fifty, four hundred and eighty dollars a square foot to build. It's in that range. The town of Milton is one that we have the newest information on. They were four seventy-five a square foot to build and they did an expansion to the existing building as well. So it's a small space and I don't mean to understate the importance of it. It's eighty-five hundred square feet, it's under ten thousand square feet. It's not a big space, you don't get a lot of cost efficiencies, especially with the renovation as well. So if we were doing sixty thousand square feet, you know, we wouldn't budget a hundred eighty dollars a square foot to renovate. We'd probably be much closer to a hundred forty, because we get efficiencies, you lose those efficiencies on a small space. Any questions on numbers? Just keep plowing ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Warden, Doug. So I need to question on your new bill because the municipality of West Perth has been looking into. And so I got the updated numbers from Nelson Dolly on the twenty-sixth. He's two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, you're four fifty to four eighty. We're building a potentially a fourteen thousand square foot building. You're building a ten, nine, ten thousand square foot building at twice the price. I need to know where you got your numbers from. I hear a lot of Milton, places like that. Did you get any local numbers or any accurate numbers?
Through you, Warden. So those, those numbers are current numbers that we have. The question I would have, so to answer your question, though, we didn't get anything local to this. Can I do that? Absolutely, we're able to do that. The number that you're looking at, that you have for your bill, is it just a construction number? Or is it a, is it a project number? So does it include, for example, the furniture that would go in there? Does it include all the consulting? All the consulting fees that would happen right from kind of where this organization is today, because we don't have anything, right?
Yeah, the civil works, contingency, architecture, project design and everything is in there. Now, we just built a fire hall too, so we're trying to, Nelson Dolly's looking at it also. Walter might be able to step in because he's sitting there with you, whereas I'm just on the Zoom. But it just seems that it's a very high number and I know you like to go high. And then it looks good when you come down. Which is a great way to do it, but sometimes four point five million dollars scares people into different projects. Before we go far with this, I'd like to be a little more accurate on numbers, but I'm a numbers guy, so I'll let that go. We're not making any decisions today, so.
Okay, Doug and Paul, I'm going to let Walter address that question. If you're going to suck there, Walter.
Yeah, I'm just looking up the information that Doug was talking about. And the suggested would be, as Doug said, two hundred to three twenty-five per square foot for fourteen thousand square feet. However, we already have some of the services there from, excuse me, from building the fire hall, such as plumbing into the services. Hydro is already stuffed in, so there's a lot of stuff that we already have there that we don't have to put in again. And that has a big bearing on it. And then what I have here is that we need another hundred to two hundred thousand additional civil works to rework the parking lots and stuff. So, you know, I don't think we're as far out as what maybe Doug has indicated, but that's the information I have here.
So and that includes consulting and everything?
So what, I think we're close. We don't, I don't have, when I'm putting that option together, I don't have anything other than it's about this big at this point. So with respect, I agree with you, are the numbers potentially a little bit high? Absolutely. But could it be, you know, four seventy-five a square foot to build? Absolutely, because we can show those numbers from other municipalities. So would this, would this municipality be a little bit more frugal? Maybe not do some of the things that the town of Milton did, maybe it's an easy build? Absolutely. Those are, those are all things that would be value engineered as you take that next step. But I think that where we are right now, if the county was to say, hey, let's go forward with a brand-new building that needs to be at the phase that you're at, comfort level with that four, four and a bit million dollars, doesn't mean it's going to be that, but it has to be that comfort level. Because it could be that and there's bills to show that it could be that.
So basically what you're saying is your price is based on a greenfield project. You're starting with absolutely nothing and moving ahead, where this other project, the numbers that are being quoted, have some services there, have some different things there, there is some similarity between that and your existing fire hall. But you're talking just a straight greenfield build.
Right. Right, next slide. Okay, so what we also did, that was create a little bit of a matrix, again, for these options. And again, this engagement is about accommodation and about space utilization. So that's, I think that's, it's really important to remember that, yes, we put some cost guidelines in there because that's always important. But then what we tried to do is, you know, kind of good, better, best, if you will. You know, what if we were to go forward with the option, is there an improvement to the current situation? And we looked at a number of criteria, so we obviously looked at the cost of the investment. You know, the do-nothing and the other two options, you know, from a cost perspective, whether that's deemed a positive or not, but based on the current situation. Because even in option one, there is, there is cost, the do-nothing does cost you something, especially with respect to twenty-four St. Andrew. And obviously, the third, the fourth option, well, the third option, should be four, sorry, is it typo there? Should be the fourth option. It's obviously, you know, this, compared to the other two, it's just not as favorable. From a service delivery perspective, we can create significant improvement in options two through four versus maintaining the current administration or current accommodation. The same with staff adjacencies. If you can, if you think of those adjacencies that we presented and how things are situated today inside the courthouse, we're really not supporting those adjacencies at all. Same with space utilization. Leased and owned. And so this is just based on my experience with respect to leased or owned buildings and it really upped to the direction of the organization. But I would say most public organizations are trying to move away where they can from leased buildings. So the city of London is moving away from their leased building portfolio. The region of Halton, I know they're bigger organizations, but to me that doesn't matter. They are currently, they've built a new police building and they're currently reworking the old police building to staff accommodation to come out of about three million dollars worth of leasing annually. So that's what we see. So I, and we can be changed and just my opinion at this point that to maintain option one and to maintain a lease is not as favorable as having an owned building. You're not going anywhere. Right? Public organizations are the pillar, they're the pillar of the community and their facilities should represent that. As far as these ease of implementation, you know, obviously, you know, building a new building is probably the easiest thing to implement out of anything because you just build it and move there. Option two is, it's not ridiculously hard, but you're going to have construction on a campus where people are currently working and new construction. And then I have option three as the most challenging one because you have a tenant in there right now. You have an existing lease to the end of twenty twenty-three or sometime in twenty twenty-three. So you can't even, you can do all the planning, but you can't actually start renovating that space until twenty twenty-three. And then effectively supporting staff growth, obviously two for four, we can definitely support staff growth, but maintaining the current the current accommodation strategy to do nothing, you will not be able to support any staff growth. It'd be very, very difficult, continue to share spaces, et cetera. So based on that, we have two, what we believe to be the most like for me. Two options that are viable, if you will, with option two likely being the best one. Because you do have to do something with twenty-four St. Andrew Street anyway, so why not use it for your accommodation needs? So what we did is we took that option, because part of the resolution was to take a look at how we could utilize that campus. Let's go to the next slide. We thought we'd come back with a feasibility plan to show whatever is that presented to you today in physical space. It doesn't mean this is the solution. It's just a concept, right? And a concept of how space can be utilized to support your business moving forward. With respect to what we're going to show you, we've utilized a lot of the existing work that was already done. So not a big believer in reinventing the wheel, it didn't make any sense to me. We've got stuff that, hey, that makes sense, well, let's evolve that, which is what we've done. So in order to lay out space and again, in order to determine how much space you need, we use a government standard, the federal government standard called Workplace two point O. And the federal government came out with this standard in an effort to help them organize and utilize their space. So the size of the federal government as an organization is obviously massive. We have buildings everywhere, they have a lot of economy silos within their organization. I don't use silos in a negative sense, sometimes silos are important in public communications. They have a lot of tenure, so they had a lot of challenges with, geez, I've been here this long, therefore I get this, which creates a real challenge with respect to space utilization. So they came out with a standard that identified four different types of spaces and those spaces are allocated based on function. Solely based on function. Are they perfect? No. Right? Will you lay it out to the letter of the law inside that Workplace two point O? Probably not, because we will want to support the uniqueness of your organization. But it gives us something that we can tie a standard to and create some consistency to as well. So we took that, and there is more detail in the staff report and I can talk to that if need be. So we took that information, we took the adjacencies, we took the headcount and we started to create a space for you, utilizing twenty-four St. Andrews. So if you just skip past that to this slide, thank you. So this would be, so there's one correction just on this slide, just so you know. So this building actually doesn't exist on a real AutoCAD file, an electronic file, so we created it. So we just created the same floor twice and put it on top of it. So we just created the same floor twice, but on top of each other, based on on what's in the reports, that will work. So we actually have a door, uh, on the top of the building there, that door will go right into the ground, so it doesn't exist, just so, because we are on what would be. We're calling it kind of the first floor, it's like a back split, you almost have, so it's it's that lower, it's that lower level, if you will, in the building. So what we did is create, so that's the now becomes a primary access point into the building, so what we would do. And I'm just, for those that are virtual, I'm just pointing at the slide there, I'm just identifying, if you can see where the reception is, um, on that plant. It's just on the on the left side of the of the, uh, long part of the building at the bottom. And then we have, uh, Andrew Street at the top, so that would just identify where the road is, just to orientate you. Um, so the the rectangle, the long rectangle at the bottom is a new build. Connecting into the, um, vertical rectangle, which is the existing space. So what we're showing there, if you remember, the access points into the building, we don't have council chambers here, so this model council chambers stays where it is. Um, but you would walk in and you'd walk right into a reception, so now the public consultant service coming into spaces greeted by a by a county staff member. And that may be as far as they need to go into the building, right? Now started to control access and security in their building, because we've got a small public meeting space and a large public meeting space. And if you were to build, if you were to take this and say, Paul, let's just build it, what we would do is we put a second door on the four-person meeting room. To allow for access to either side of the room for for that that safety piece, so it's not one way in and one way out. Um, we've, um, created that, uh, just a staff area at the back, we're just, we call it a coffee bar, maybe not the right terminology, but those social spaces are very, very important in buildings today. Uh, they become meeting spaces, and, um, I've often said that when I started started my career, uh, the lunchroom, if you will, was behind the locked door. And it kind of got opened up, but, you know, ten to twelve, and you better be out of there by ten to one. And then over the years, it's become more and more accessible, you know, and it became to that point, hey, well, let's take the doors off it. Oh, well, you can go in there at ten o'clock, if you want to read the newspaper and grab a coffee on your break, that's good, to today, actually becoming a functional work area, right? So meetings can happen in that space, it's more casual type interaction. And then in the vertical rec rectangle there, we have, uh, planning and economic development, and you can see we just identified the service counter behind the locked door, right? So we're controlling access, but now what we've done is is that anybody that we've identified that requires true, um, unplanned public access is on the first floor. There is no reason for anybody to be in this building on the second floor unless we know they're coming, right? So then you would go up just before you click, we'd go up to the second floor, either through stairs or, you know, um, uh, an elevator. You know, from a vision perspective, that elevator is probably carded, right? So that if, um, somebody was coming to meet with C O or or a member of council, you would physically come down to get them, or somebody would come down to get them and bring them back up. To you, so again, it's how we can control access there, you just go to the second floor. And what we've done there, um, is, uh, if we look at the vertical piece again, uh, we have, um, I T and financial services in an office. For H R, well, they're incredibly remote, um, H R's an interesting one, because. Most of the staff that they support, actually, out of this building, right, you have staff everywhere, right? So you you need to go to your customer, but there could be a space that they need, they need to come come back to. Um, on the on the left side of the, uh, horizontal rectangle, you'll see that we have the C O, um, and a meeting space, like they say, services, so we're starting to support that adjacencies. Um, grouping staff together in workstations. Uh, we've incorporated a touchdown, uh, office in there as well, so we talked about, uh, leadership from, uh, Paradise and Public Works not having this space, well, there's a space. That becomes available, they can come work as part of that team all day long, uh, which realistically helps create the connection with the organization. Helps the C O drive leadership within the organization, could also be a space for counselors to work. It's a, it's a, it could be a bookable space, it's not owned by anybody, so it just gives you, it gives you, uh, folks an access space as well. And then we've created, um. Uh, a meeting room, a small complex space in the the top right of the of the, uh, horizontal box there, we we've labeled it council warden, warden council. Uh, and that may be, and and, you know, what we start to think about at this point, because we're talking about, um, driving the business forward is the types of interactions. So we're just trying to show different types of spaces, and using this as a as a perfect example is that, you know, I need I need a team, I need to support a team. And every once in a while, you need to have a conversation that maybe is a little bit career directing, right? You're trying to provide some advice, and it's a little bit more of a direct conversation. So having that correct conversation across a desk creates a very different message than if we were sitting in two soft chairs. Right, but there's also the need in workspaces today to have that coaching moment, right? That very casual conversation, generations that have come into the workforce today, they interact very differently, and they'd like to be led in different ways. So we're just showing that as a perfect type of space that, you know, the council, you you could sit down and have a cup of coffee with a constituent who just wants to have a casual conversation. Or maybe it is a little bit contentious, but you want to bring it down, right? So you want to bring them into a more comfortable environment versus trying to meet across the desk, just showing some different types of spaces. So I'm gonna go to, uh, just the next slide, um, this very, very high level, and we just thought we'd throw in there, just to give you a sense of timing, just so we go to kind of. How long things would take, uh, based on where you are right now, um. If the go ahead was to given, to move forward with that with that option, as far as, uh, you know, revitalize, et cetera. Um, you probably would not start construction until some point in early twenty twenty-two. Right, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of things that we don't know about that option, right? The way the buildings are connected today, so it's great, you know, the previous reports have suggested that we can expand in in the location that we're showing. We want to connect both buildings together, um, but we don't know until you get in there, right? So there's lots of consulting work that still needs to happen, um, to get you to the point that you've got a permit, that you could, that you could actually start building. Um, we're not suggesting at all that, um, you can, um, be prepared to start that planning phase in beginning of twenty twenty-one. I don't think there's enough information yet, uh, but what I think we've done, we moved it forward, um, so that now the decision around accommodation can be made based on business need. Um, and things that we can go out and we can measure against over time, right? So we can measure and we can start to plan for, so we start to look at some of these adjacencies, well, you're not gonna be able to change. Or or put an accommodation strategy in place with it physically being put in place until sometime in, you know, twenty twenty-three. What can we do now to continue to evolve the organization? If you think that there's value in the things that we've been able to identify and align together on at a leadership level around adjacencies and accommodations, so it gives you a bit of a plan to move forward. So our recommendation, if you just go to the next slide. Um, our recommendation could be to further explore, uh, and con confirm the viability of, uh, either or both. Um, utilization of twenty-four St. St. Andrew with an expansion. And or the utilization of five here on, uh, as I said off the top, I think that, um. The utilization of five here of the staff accommodation, from an overall space perspective, will likely work, I'm quite confident that that would work. Uh, but there's some other things that come along with respect to that, you still have to do twenty-four St. Andrew, you've got a tenant in there, uh, so there's lots of things to go, but if that makes sense, then the next step for that would obviously be. To do a bit of a plan like we just showed you, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-four St. Andrew, so. Um, that's, that's, that's where we are, that's what we found, I I think that, um, this is significant opportunity for the organization to drive the business forward and continue to grow, I think a lot of things we've heard. A lot of things that that we can do that will link very, very well to to the strat plan, uh. I will say, um, and I don't often have the opportunity to say this, to be quite honest with you, we have a very aligned, uh, leadership team in this. I'm gonna say that, I didn't see you say that, uh, they have a very aligned leadership team with respect to, uh, what the vision is. Of how to grow and evolve the organization to do good and to and to do better, to be quite honest with you, so. The the, uh, focus session that we did, the workshop that we did, um. I've done lots of those where I've had the C O get up and leave. And just say, you guys aren't aligned, go figure it out, and then they can call me back in, you guys are just saying what I'm saying, we didn't get that, you know, we had real good. Um, especially when we went to the adjacencies, we had lots of people pushback, like, is that really the way that it is? So we have really good alignment, which we don't always get, so, uh, so I thank them for that, it made my job easy that day, so. Um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Paul, so I I've already got a couple of hands that are going up, but before we get to that. You know, there are somewhat other possibilities, and one of the ones that may come up here is co-build.
Yeah.
And we had a brief discussion about co-build on Tuesday when we met. So before we actually open up for questions, do you want to maybe give some comments as to your thoughts on a co-build?
Yeah, absolutely, um. I feel you, when it's. You know, there's been lots of times in in my career when I've been able to say with high confidence that, you know, this is the way it's going, the way where the place is going. And with COVID, I had this conversation yesterday with a customer, and it's, I know it's very difficult to figure out exactly where it's going, I I have my beliefs, but they're just my beliefs. And so we have two large projects that we're implementing right now, you know, right in the middle of COVID. Um, and I'll share them both with you, um, so one is an organization called Walsley, and they, um, supply, um. The plumbing, the back materials to the building, the building community, a very large, uh, large, large company. They have about fifty thousand square feet, and, uh, about four weeks before COVID became anything that we needed to worry about, I completed a leadership session, much to hear. And the direction was, is that they were going to renew their lease for five years, the public or private organization, so leasing made sense for them. And then over the five years, they would accommodate their growth through hoteling and and desk sharing and those those alternative work strategies. Um, about forty-five weeks into COVID, their C E O called me and said, hey, Paul, we're at year five, and. At the time, I really didn't have any sense at all as to what he was talking about, but the reality is, he said, I can now have my organization work remotely, proven that we can do it. Um, so they will then change their real estate portfolio to to be reduced and go to more of an alternative work strategy, work from home. Um, you know, so we have a schedule, for example, so finance will always be in the office three days before month end and two days after month end. Uh, because they all need together, work together, that works for them, right, that works for that organization. Um, where, uh, so we have another large build that we're doing for, um, a company that most of you will know being Kabota. Uh, so we're doing their new Canadian head office, they are not changing their plan. So they're still going with the model that everybody will be coming to the office every day. Um, will they be there on day one when it's built? Probably not, because I don't think we have a vaccine and we'll still be working through this, um, so they'll go to a schedule. But ultimately, at the end of the day, their belief is, and and I'd like to think this as well, is that we'll get through this and we'll go back to a sense of. It won't be the old norm, but it will be a new norm. When I look at the public sector, I think that there is obviously, um, an important perception and and we are quite honest, the reality that. Um, when the public comes in, they they want to be served, will we see more of a move to to online services? Most likely, we're seeing that in every business everywhere in the world. Um, but I do believe that, uh, there will still be the need to face for face to face, so I think what we will see in, um, in the short term. COVID has created an opportunity for people to work very differently and collaborate very differently, uh, through through utilizing technology. Those skills that we've all developed and continuing to develop will be important when we come back to the office, because we will come back to the office, there will still be the need for a space. Whether it's a destination and organizations, um. You know, have employees work from home more often than they come in versus working from home a day a week, and and then come the rest of the time, will be driven by the organization, there is no, there is no right or wrong, it's whatever the, whatever the true business needs are. Um, you know, so that's it, it's it's very difficult to to know where it's going, but I think that if we support what's happening today and only today, I believe that's short sighted. And I think we need to, um, do our best to determine where it's going. I will tell you, and I, there was, I got an email this morning from Pathstone, which is a, uh, a mental child mental health, um, group that we've done work with in the past. And they talk a lot, and we're seeing a lot of the impact of of mental health. And also the impact to business by not having people work together. So leaders, a lot of leaders that I'm talking to really want to bring their employees back to the office. The piece that's working remotely is very tactical stuff, you know, processing data, processing numbers, I work by myself. The piece that's missing, and everybody's really struggling with is, we've got this problem, let's go fix it together, let's do it right now, how do I, how do I get on the whiteboard together? Right, so the ability to innovate, uh, need to connect to the culture of the company is disappearing, and that's a grave concern to many leaders today, many, many leaders, so. I can go for hours, but I'll stop.
Okay, and just further to that comment, so I specifically, it was kind of honed in on co-build. And when we talked about that, you talked about the need for dual.
Oh, I'm.
Facilities completely, irregardless whether it was two minutes, so just maybe focus on that.
I thought you said COVID, I'm sorry.
No, actually, I'm, oh, sorry, I meant co-build.
Everybody looked at what we're talking about, COVID, I honestly thought you said, uh, COVID, yeah, so COVID, COVID's an interesting one, so I did, um. A strategic study for the region of Halton a few years ago, uh, where we looked at bringing, um, the region. The region the police existed on the same campus today is set in a shared building, so we took a look at building a new police building. Uh, expanding that, uh, that facility for just the regional staff, and then bringing the two school boards onto the same campus. And then we would then build four separate buildings, and then a shared facility, a multi-services facility. Um, we had a a a process that we went through to identify things that could be shared and things that could not be shared. Very important that we maintained the autonomy of each organization. Um, so we were able to share things like physical space, so what physical space could we truly share, it came down to meeting space, quite honest with you. Um, but we looked at things other than space, what could we share? Services, and the only services that we could really share would be things like courier, uh, cleaning services, snow removal, those those types of things. When we took a look at other types of things to share, it would impact the autonomy of the organization, so we could not. Uh, so if you look at the two school boards as an example in Halton, they don't share buses, right? Same company, the bus does the same route, it just does it twice. Um, you know, H R, that was put on the table, could we, could we share H R services? And the answer to that came back as no, it was all done through through, um, elective official eng engagement, both with the trustees and and the counselors. So, if we were to take a look at, and and I, and I'm just realistically kind of spitballing a little bit here, but if you take a look at this organization, the size of the organization. Um, and some assumptions of, you know, other, uh, government entities within the region that you could share with. Ultimately, probably all you could share would be a council chambers. Uh, at this point, maybe some, maybe some meeting spaces, but at the end of the day, when you take a look at the number of meeting spaces that we're putting in here in the plan, I think we have four. You know, so you're probably looking at sharing a couple of thousand square feet at at most. Um, you know, so again, it it has to do with size, with the region of Halton, it it makes sense, we're we're six hundred thousand square feet of space. Um, you know, so it it made sense, um, it didn't move forward, um, we had significant savings were identified, um, but, um. It was just something that the four partners felt was was not the right thing to do, uh, for their businesses, so that that sharing did not move forward. We see sharing with, um, you know, fire and and paramedics, we see that those buildings popping up a little bit more sharing for sure. We don't see sharing in schools, uh, because of the space at this point, uh. You know, so, uh, it's an option, yes, um, will you have a significant amount of savings? Uh, not likely. So. In fact, okay, perfect, sorry about that, I missed her.
Thank you, no, actually, we needed to have that COVID. Talk anyway, so I had, I'm gonna open the floor for discussion or questions or comments, and I had Counselor Wilhelm stand up there a while ago, so he's leading up.
Okay, uh, first, uh, thanks, Paul, for a very good report, uh. In my opinion, it didn't go far enough, but that's fine, we can address that, so I'm gonna start backwards, uh. And I agree, building a a new building would be best for the county, not leasing. Uh, the financing costs have never been this low, and therefore, uh, you could, uh, certainly commit to, uh. Hang it down over twenty-five years and not costing a lot, however, I can't support to commit to, uh, spend, uh, three to four million dollars on a new building. On our rate pairs behalf. Moving on to the courthouse, um. I think we've been negligent in not moving forward, putting an elevator in already, we have to do it. Uh, the building's not going anywhere, so we should have already done that, in my opinion. And then that would take away the accessibility issues, hopefully, uh, still gonna have some security issues, but, uh, not sure what to do there. Uh, the Service Ontario Building, Five Huron, and Doug maybe could provide some insight in that. I personally do not believe that in three years, the province will want that. I personally do not believe that in three years, the province will want that building. Uh, I think what I see is everything's moving online. They're going to reduce the number of facilities that you can actually walk into. So I think we may end up with uh five Huron empty. And then we could move forward, putting staff in there and uh keep the cost down on that. And of course, the last one is twenty-four St. Andrews. We made, I I think, a very good move in building a new archives building and and moving out of there. However, no council yet has uh taken the bull by the horns and saying, either tear it down or refurbish it. And I think that's where we need to see the costs. Because in my opinion, we need to tear that building down and sell the lot or whatever. But with five Huron and making some modifications to the courthouse, I think that's the way we should be looking at going.
Okay, thanks, Bob. So I'm just gonna add to one of your comments, that maybe we didn't go quite far enough. So when we had Mayhew come up with this report, cost was of the extreme importance, as Paul probably realizes. So we weren't authorized to spend a lot of money to get this report. There does have to be more investigation done as to what we can do with St. Andrews as far as the utilities and the sewers, and John can maybe address this a little further, but they're all interconnected. There will have to be a bunch of money spent to look at that facility. What has to happen before we can do that is we have to have a resolution from council giving staff the money to actually do that, or, you know, Mayhew or whoever. Like, it has to be investigated, but you're right, uh, you're entitled to your opinions and I can't say I don't disagree with it. But we're gonna go around and I'm gonna take more questions and comments and then, and also senior staff, if they have questions or comments, I'm certainly willing to hear from you as well, or staff that are in the room. More questions or comments? Don't everybody raise your hand at once. Walter?
Well, I um, I agree, I guess, with with some of the uh, most of the points, I guess, that that Bob has made. And I do want to thank you for your report, an excellent report. And I I have no idea down the road, uh, what's gonna happen with uh Service Ontario, whether they'll be there or not. And and, you know, that would probably hinge on where we go. And I was taking the fact that they'll probably be there. But I think there's not a lot of options uh when we look at twenty-four St. Andrew Street. And and I I I see us, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a compromised uh option in here that we really haven't talked about. And that is, you tear down twenty-four St. Andrew Street and you build an addition onto the courthouse. You put your elevator in that new addition, which avoids all the the issues of putting an elevator up through the middle of the courthouse, which is, I assume, is going to be very, very expensive. But um, you can incorporate that in. Addition. Um, and and the comment was made that a new building is easiest to do. And from the figures that that you have there, I'm assuming that that would be kind of an in-between figure. The issue is twenty-four St. Andrews, uh, we have to do something with it. We just can't leave it there. And and of course, there's asbestos in it and one thing and another. To renovate it and and to tear it, the guts of it out is, as we've seen here, it's just gonna be too costly, you know? Um, and I know we just can't take a hi-ho in there and and knock it down. It's gonna be expensive even to tear down. But um, you know, I I I guess there's, you know, listening to Bob, there's probably two ways that we can go. Uh, if five Huron Street is gonna be available, then that would be a logical um maybe way to go. If not, I think myself, I think you tear the, as I said, tear the archives down and build a piece on there. I I certainly wouldn't want to see us get rid of that property, uh, sever that that um facility off and sell it. I think down the road, we may need the land and if nothing else, you may gain a bit of parking. But certainly, uh, I I see the potential. And if we look at what, uh, and I don't know whether Laurie's got any any figures on what the elevator may be or not, you know? But um, I think it would be a lot cheaper to put an elevator in a new building than try and stick it up through the middle of the courthouse. You know, the way that that building is constructed. So that's my thoughts.
And that's what we want to hear. Yeah. Uh, John, any ballpark on that elevator?
You were interested, and I I don't have any exact figures at this point in time. We're still working with the engineers um on on the design here. There's been some complications as to what needs to happen. And and I think I've said before, and Walter is is exactly right. Trying to put a, an elevator in a building that was built in in the eighteen eighties uh is not easy. The building was never designed for for an elevator. And when you're trying to put one in a building like that, you're talking about you know, renovating and changing a much bigger space than than what an elevator is. So putting an elevator in a in a new build is uh is much cheaper. Um, I'm going to ballpark this elevator in the courthouse at about one point five million, uh, and potentially north of that. We're working on getting a budget to for that to, obviously. And the reason why that is so high, it's just the difficulties of putting that in there, the construction of it, and the area that it's actually going to affect and that you're going to have to modify and renovate looking forward. So. You know, and it is something that that, you know, as the house of the house said, it's something that needs to be done for that building and and is correct. It's not easy and we have to remember, we will end up with a lot less office space than we currently have when we go and do that.
Further questions or comments? Matt?
Well, just looking at these numbers, I think I'm gonna have to agree with Walter. Like, I think we should be getting some figures on demolition for twenty-four St. Andrew and and potentially looking at building our addition there with our elevator in it. So I think there's gonna be some big cost savings as trying to put that elevator up through the old building.
Any other comments? Matt?
No.
Todd, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Um, I thank you for the report. Um, certainly challenging. And I think, you know, we can reflect back on choices that have been made in the past that, um, you know, put our, put us into an odd position of of having to make, what is a uh series of difficult decisions. I mean, as we think about the elevator uh through the old building, um, yeah, certainly the cost is extraordinary and it's sunk cost one way or the other, really. The the job has to be done for the sake of the any use of that building uh with regards to AODA compliance and and so forth. I remain, um, and and for reasons actually noted by Counselor Wilhelm, I remain firmly committed to um a new build. I I I believe that this county deserves a new uh dedicated, modern administration building. I believe it needs to be outside of the city of Stratford, which isn't in our political jurisdiction. And as as Bob has said, um, there will never be a better time from a borrowing perspective to achieve this. And the costs over the long term um will not be onerous, uh particularly onerous on our taxpayers. So um for me, um, I I I remain convinced that um our our task, our best solution is to uh move to a new build.
Other comments? You?
Uh, at this point in time, is there any kind of uh government programs at the federal provincial level that we could get some cost sharing on whichever option we chose?
Uh, not specifically. Laurie can maybe answer that better. There was some announcements made yesterday between the feds and the province about an eighty-twenty split on infrastructure. Again, no details. So and again, you have to apply and hope you get selected as one of the winners. There's been all kinds of announcements about money going out in the last week, had to do with housing and all kinds of things. I haven't seen any details on any of it. And again, I know we had a discussion with Western Ontario Wardens last Friday? Is that last Friday? And one of the things we'd like to see the move to, instead of just putting uh your name in a hat and hoping you get drawn for a bit of funding, is we'd like to see it spread across all municipalities. And they're gonna approach the uh political people in Toronto and Ottawa, you know, to that respect. But again, that's nothing cut to stone and that's not guaranteed by any stretch of the imagination. Unfortunately, for smaller municipalities, that will be a bit of a setback because it'll be based on how they dole out gas tax and everything else and it's gonna be based on population. The good side of it is, you'll actually get some money. The bad side of it is, the smaller municipalities won't get enough. Any other comments or questions? Doug?
Thank you through you, Warden. Uh, I also agree with Counselor Kesenberg that we move forward with the, you know, replacing the elevator at the courthouse and also look at relocating outside of the city of of Stratford at a at a central location and moving, um, you know, also maybe demolishing uh the old archives. Thank you.
Other comments? Doug, I.
Other Doug. Well, everybody will know that I'm a new build guy, right? Because I like things new. It's not that the build, it's the efficiency after the build. But I look at over the next fifty years, um, my little building, sixty-five hundred square feet that I have, I pay less than a hundred dollars a month in natural gas. I wouldn't want to guess what the bill is at the at Huron Street there. That's not the point. Because we still have to bring it up to and put an elevator in. Five Huron Street, I think we've got that. Um, I know that when Bob talks, I, we we never talk about also having um um victim services in that building too. We we actually have them in there as a tenant also. Um, they are forcing more and more people, as Bob knows, at St. Mary's Service Ontario wasn't even offered up to somebody to continue. The government just said, drive somewhere else to get your license. Basically, that's what they told St. Mary's. That's what they told C-4 Brussels. Um, and it'll get worse before it gets better. But you only have one, one office in Perth County. I'm not sure if it'll be in the three years, but as they, as they wind down, it will be that if you want a new truck registered, you will drive probably to London or Kitchener to get it done. But I I think that might be eight years out, but it's coming. Um, the new build is the efficiencies for the next fifty years to me though, as opposed to um today. We have, we have property in Mitchell at the, at the yard, which I'm sitting right beside, that would easily accommodate the building. The services are all in the ground there. One of the employees, this must be a public document, because one of the employees asked me yesterday when they're in the store, why you wouldn't build there? Because we already have the land, we have the sewer, the water, the natural gas all there. Wouldn't be built on, it would be a separate building. But I I know we have to fix the other ones up um to bring them up to stand in the courthouse. But I think our rent would offset the courthouse, we would be able to rent the whole building in the province of there. Thank you.
Other comments? Rhonda?
I guess my comment is if we re, if we build new, what do we do with what we have? Who's gonna buy it? Because it's not accessible. So do we have to make it accessible to sell it? Which is going to be, we might as well stay where we are then. And I'm not sure the city of Stratford's gonna let us take down the old archives building. But I do agree with Walter.
There will be some outcry.
I do agree with Walter. If we're going to do it here, then we dismantle that building and build new and retrofit the courthouse and five Huron Street with it. I think the ship sailed to build new ten years ago. It was brought up then and everybody thought we were nuts and we should have moved forward then and we didn't. So I think we have to work with what we have.
Other comments? You?
Uh, I think that, uh, like you said, that we need a a lot more figures on any of these options to be able to really choose one. Especially like some like a new build, that's fine, but uh how many new buildings are built? And they're hardly built and there's always design problems with them. That's my concern. And secondly, you haven't figured in the cost of land. And I'm sure no matter where you go, the cost of land is gonna be what I would consider extremely expensive. But I just have a concern that, yeah, new buildings are really nice, but they just don't seem to be able to last like the old buildings did. My comments.
Walter?
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna go with the points already made, but we're in kind of a a a unique or an awkward situation. You know, and and we've heard some comments that uh build new um and build a city. But the problem is, we still have, as Rhonda had hinted, we still have to deal with what we got. And if we rent the courthouse out uh totally um for lawyers or to the province for 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 courts, we still have to put an elevator in it to make it accessible. That 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 has to happen. We still have to deal with twenty-four St. Andrew Street. And and as I said before, the the costs to renovate that are just prohibitive. And as Jim said, there'll be an outcry about it, but we threw that balloon out a couple of years ago and and had the cry that we've got to preserve it. Well, I didn't see a check come with those cries. It's an old, old building. Mind you, from the outside, the brick, and that look good, but it's an old building. And and for our use, you have to look what's the best bang for your buck. And, you know, I guess as a compromise, you can build a new building where the, onto the courthouse, knock off the St. Andrew Street, um, you've got the land. And that doesn't go with with Todd moving completely out of the city, but that gives us what we need and 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 uh no matter what we do, if we build a new building outside of Stratford someplace, we still have to deal with twenty-four St. Andrew Street. We still have to deal with the uh with the elevator. So um, you know, I I I think we're kind of into a corner, as I said before. We still have to deal with those things.
Todd?
I think my general take is that um with regards to twenty-four St. Andrew, I I have sort of two thoughts. The the first, of course, is that if we were to proceed down a a renovation path for this building, as has been talked about in the report, uh, I am firmly convinced that that high-end estimate will be inflated by another thirty or forty percent once they get into the weeds there. And so I I I don't have strong confidence that uh that the budget number that we see in the report won't rapidly escalate as soon as they start pulling things apart. I've I've seen this happen time and time again with old buildings and and I'm convinced that uh we would be in at least as deep as a new build. Um, uh, so let's consider that. Uh, the second point, though, uh, to the demolition of twenty-four St. Andrew Street, uh, there are some hurdles, right? First of all, while it doesn't have a heritage designation, it's in a heritage zone. And so the city of Stratford will have some say over um whether to allow the removal of that building. The other hurdle, of course, is in removing that building, the cost of uh of that demolition or removal will be substantial because of the asbestos risk and other uh matters. And so it's not gonna be an easy uh removal. Uh, I could imagine that removal being upwards of a million dollars just to take that building down. And um and I agree, we will have to deal with it. But, you know, my preference is uh remains that, um, you know, we are, as a political jurisdiction, housing our facilities are our primary place inside a different political jurisdiction. And when we're thinking about the issues of of trying to sort of put uh new wine into old bottles here, which is what we've been talking about, I'm, you know, pretty vehemently opposed to that. Um, I'm not completely opposed to the notion of a new build um on the St. Andrews site, but I think the hurdles to get there will be substantial and the cost will wind up being as much as a greenfield build or build, as Counselor Ite has said, um, on county-owned land already in Mitchell, uh, which um was a useful contribution, I think, to our discussion.
Bob?
I think that we can sit here, go round and round all day. I think this is a great first step, but I'd like to make a resolution. I think somewhere in here I read that the staff needs fifty thousand dollars to get appropriate estimates on the aid dismantling, refurbishing, whatever, twenty-four Saint Andrews, and I would like to make that resolution. Because without the dollars, the actual dollars, we can, like I say, go around, round here. And the first step is, what are we gonna do with Saint Andrews Street? And let's find out dollars and cents, make a decision.
So I have, you're moving that?
Yes.
Do I have a second here for that resolution? I've got about three or four. I'll take you, McDermott. Any comments or questions before I bring that to a vote? Walter?
Gotta have a little bit of humor. I agree. Missed our boat on twenty-four Saint Andrews. Brian Priestapp offered to take the asbestos out of there on weekends and put it into the blue boxes and get rid of it. We missed that opportunity.
Remember, we are live stream.
Are we? Well, there you go.
Okay, I'm just gonna make a couple of comments. You're right. So what, when we came here today, we knew we weren't gonna make a decision. What we wanted to do was potentially eliminate one or two options or maybe add an option. We wanted to narrow down the focus because we can't keep looking at four or five options and expect to go anywhere. That's why we've never got anywhere to this point. So if we can go through and find out what it's gonna take to dissect Saint Andrews Street off the rest of this campus, we have, that's a very good start. And as far as tearing down Saint Andrews, you will have to abate the asbestos, no matter what you do with it. You're not, you can't sell it with it in. It's got mold in it. So even if you think you're gonna sell the property, you're still gonna have to abate the problems before you can do anything with it. Let's be honest. So if we can pass a resolution to find out what it's gonna cost to deal with twenty-four Saint Andrews Street, and we'll have staff come back with the report, and I'm not sure whether it's gonna involve Mayhew or whoever, as long as we can get the correct information.
Okay.
That's what I want, because hopefully, you know me, I like to get things done, and I get really I can't use the word I'd normally say. I get disgruntled when we can't get things done. Anyway, any further comments on that motion? And do I have any comments from staff here? John?
Through you, Warden, I guess, and for twenty-four Saint Andrews Street, is that to look into the costs of and potential for demolition as well as the, you know, a better cost estimate for abating and renovating?
I would think we'd look at the cost of demolition, and you, the rest of council can correct me when I'm done here. The cost of demolition, the cost of abating asbestos and mold and everything in that building, to potentially make it saleable? Or, that's another option, or renovate. And we also need to know if you think you're gonna dissect that building off the campus. We have to know how much it's gonna cost to get those utilities altered in order to do that, because they're all intertwined. Bob?
I think also with that, I think that building needs a new roof.
Well, it's very cool.
That all needs to come into that package.
Tarps don't stay on well in many days. Yep, and Laurie's gonna add something.
So through the warden, just so I understand that direction, that still is looking into potentially utilizing that building as accommodating the staff? Or is council just saying, find out what it needs to be abated? And what you need to do to either tear it down or sever the property in, in a state that we could sell it off, but perhaps not included in as an accommodation piece? Or do you want us to take, because that's a whole lot of work as well, to be able to see if that's still on the books as an option to accommodate staff?
Okay, I'm gonna ask Paul a question before I go any further. What would it take to look into that building to see what might be hidden that we aren't aware of? And what the true cost of renovation might be?
I, through you, Warden, I, I believe that should be part of the scope and, and part of, like, the report that comes back. In order to get the information that you truly need, you need to be deeper. I think, to your point, this is, this study was about space accommodation, right? With some very high-level budget numbers. So now you can make a decision based on this to say, yes, I can accommodate my staff that way. Let's look at that option. You now need the detail and the true numbers to know what that true cost is. That needs to be part of that. So when I, what I'm hearing and what you're asking, that, that, that should be part of this. It's just automatically done. You can't come back with a true cost of demolition, a true cost of renovation if you're not opening up some walls.
That's kind of what I'd like to see. Now, is everybody here, all the counselors in favor of that? I see Todd shaking his head. I've lost Doug Ite. Bob?
Just, so, I, I, I'd like to get some kind of plan here. So this is step one. Thank you. Step two would be, what is it gonna take with Saint Andrews Street to aid demolish it, refurbish it, get it in a saleable condition? Okay, so that's done. Three, what do we do then? Are we going to make a decision on what's it gonna cost to renovate five Hereon? Because we can go along and make single steps, but can we put it all together and say, okay, these are your cost options?
Okay, so, yep, I know exactly what you're saying. So what I'm gonna add to that, and maybe to your resolution. So we have said, we want to know what it would cost to perhaps renovate Saint Andrews Street for our accommodation. Should, we, we should also be adding five Hereon Street as to what it would cost to renovate that, should that building fall back in our hands in the next short period of time. And I, and I honestly say, and I know I've had this conversation with Bob Wilhelm, for him to register his truck plates now, he's not, he's not allowed into the office. You have to courier it in, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and I got a couple more people.
Just through the warden, too, there is, you have previously looked at or considered the addition to the county courthouse. You haven't gone very far with that, but, you know, with the, you've already selected a site and, and directed us to look internally to the courthouse for the installation of the elevator. While we're doing this on the backside of the courthouse, do you want us to dig, dig a little deeper in there to say, if you were just to put the addition on the courthouse, could it accommodate what we need in the size of eighty-five hundred square feet? And then you can deal with your other two buildings. Because at the end of the day, if you're keeping five Hereon, you would be able to rent that out beyond. Right? That's got a longer lifespan than certainly twenty-four Saint Andrew does.
Yes. Five Hereon Street wouldn't be as easy to rent as space within the courthouse.
But there's not very much space in the courthouse.
No, but the reason, if we, if we had the accommodation, we took staff out, we would have some office we could rent out to lawyers.
Or you'd probably rent it out to the people in five Hereon, like.
Or possibly five year, but you still have to make it accessible.
Yes, you do.
And five Hereon Street's gonna be a little tougher to rent out. Let's be honest, there's no parking. Somebody wants to rent that facility, they want parking. Service Ontario really doesn't care, but other people might. Todd had his hand up.
Well, I think, you know, I, I admit to, when we talk about the Saint Andrews report, I admit to interest in finding out what, what Walter's option, his compromise option would look like. So if we removed the building and, and built new there, and it was able to somehow factor in later costs in, in such an appropriate way, then I think we should understand that impact. I would be surprised if it's actually any cheaper than a greenfield build, but it probably will be comparable, but I'd like to know that. So I think that we need to think about that, that new option that's sort of introduced here today. It doesn't change my, you know, one of my decision factors, which is I believe our facility should be in our political jurisdiction. But nevertheless, I, I, if we're gonna have all the facts, then we might as well understand that one, too.
Other comments? Doug?
Just add, so, like Bob said, I think we'd need to have, you know, certain steps. So if we're opening everything up, we're I think once this is done, we need to get a Realtor's opinion on what the complete campus is worth to sell it all.
Did you write that down, Laurie?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be honest with you. The courthouse is probably the most significant building in all of Perth County. Bar none. It's, it's, you know, not everybody appreciates history. But most people that come to the city of Stratford come down and look at the courthouse. They don't go looking at
And I agree.
Other facilities, they come look at the courthouse because of its grandeur. It's like going to the shadow front and act when you're in Quebec. The one thing we are also entrusted to do as counselors is to protect the assets of the county. And that's one thing we've been very negligent on, on Saint Andrews Street. Just look at the building. So we have to move in a direction, and I'm just trying to narrow it down. So the thing I'm getting noted today is the one thing we can stroke off the list is do nothing. Which was option number one. Am I entitled to getting that opinion? Anyway, we do, we do have a motion on the floor by Counselor Wilhelm, and it was second by Counselor McDermott. And just to clarify what all we're gonna dig into, I'm gonna let Laurie read off what she's wrote down.
Thank you through the warden. So we would be looking at accessing probably around fifty thousand dollars is what we estimated, and it would be funded by the facility reserve. So that's already there. And we'd be looking at, to be getting you the pricing on twenty-four Saint Andrews Street, what it would cost to demolish it, what it would cost to refurbish it, and as well, that would include five Hereon Street. And it would also include looking at the addition on the courthouse where that may contain a, an elevator, because if it's a lot cheaper to, to put it on the outside in an addition, it would save you the million and a half plus that we're gonna estimate to put it up through the middle. And that, that would give you, I would believe, enough detailed information with much more a, a deep down costing that you could make an informed decision. Did I miss anything on that?
Just looking around the room to see if there's anything that thinks we missed in that.
Just, if I, if I may, just to Counselor Callum's comments about a, a real estate evaluation of the campus. I think that, that actually is an important concept.
I can get that. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Any more staff comments? John?
Through you, Warden, I just, and thank you. I think that provides us a lot more direction and focus with this. I guess my question would be, if we're to be looking at a possible addition to the courthouse with an external elevator within that addition, what does that do? Where's my direction here for the current elevator project?
Through, through the warden, I think what we would do is we will be on this right away, and we would, I mean, you've got to continue with the, and I think you're almost there with the work that you have, but we want to, I think, have this decision made before we present back to council to say, it's gonna be this much, and here's where it goes. Does that sound reasonable?
Bob?
Uh, one, one minor detail that we should get confirmation from Corin is, do we have the ability to borrow five million dollars if required? Because it would be nice to be able to pay for it, on a loan or something.
Through the board, yes, our current uses of the, our ARL equivalent is about three point three percent of the twenty-five percent that we're able to borrow. With what we're talking about, about four and a half billion dollars onto our ARL using current infrastructure alternative rates, we would use about twenty-three percent of our overall ARL percentage.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's a good point, though, Bob.
It is a good point.
Okay. Those in favor of that motion? One, two, three, four, five. It looks like that's unanimous. Perfect. We have got moving in some direction.
Yeah, no, this is.
Lot more information to go. Perfect. That's kind of what I was hoping to get, is to get going in some direction. We've talked about it many times and kind of never done anything, so it's time to move. You might want to get a cost on a roof there, too, John. She's looking pretty feeble. Anyway, that takes care of that. Next steps, we pretty well covered off what we want to do. Does anybody have any comments to make before I adjourn the meeting? You have one?
I do. Just through, through the warden, I just want to express to council appreciation for taking the time to have a dedicated meeting and giving really good direction to take another step forward. It's important for us to get one kick at this can to get it right. So in order to make sure that you're, you're totally informed on this, I appreciate the ability to have clear direction, have financial support to be able to get engineering and the other important aspects of, of pulling that information together for you. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, and I just, one quick thing to say, I want to thank the staff who worked with Mayhew and Paul Bradshaw to put this together. I know it took a bunch of time. Everything lately seems to be taking a bunch of time with all the different things going on, but at least we're getting it done. Motion to adjourn. You, McDermott, second by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? She's scary. And I'll give you a shout tonight, Doug, or later to staff. Perfect. Thank you very much, folks.